I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everybody and to this important topic. You know, I often tell people that of Jacksonville from opioid overdoses than we do from suicides, homicides, and fatal car So it's a serious problem in our community. It's a serious problem across the country. I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce or have them introduce themselves, our panel, and we'll start with CJ.
Sure. CJ Kurtz, I'm the Executive Director at Onslow Community Outreach.
Good evening. I'm Raquel Painter, President of United Way of Onslow County.
I am Ernie Lee, I'm the District Attorney for the 5th Prosecutorial District of Onslow, Sampson, Duplin, Jones Counties.
Heather Perkins, Assistant Use Counselor, Jacksonville Police Department.
I'm Robert Cooper, CEO for Zero Life Center.
I'm Aaron McDonald, Business Development Referral Specialist with Cape Town Psychiatry and Addiction.
Melissa Donahue, Program Supervisor for Eastern North Carolina Outpatient and Addicts Crisis Intervention.
So I'd like to talk a little bit about some statistics, but first I'll talk about what's happening that's good. What we've seen over the last five years is a decrease in Onslow County of the folks that are using prescription opioid pills. And I can remember five years ago going to Raleigh to talk about the Hope Act and some of those other efforts by the Attorney General and by folks in our state to reduce opioids or manage them better with physicians. And so since then, we've had a lot of love.
Doing that. But when you start to look at the statistics, what you see is that over that same six-year period, the percentage of opioid deaths in Onslow County has increased by 83.4%. That's about 30 per 100,000. And so when you think about that, more folks in the United States will die of opioid deaths than will that died in the Vietnam War. From 2019 to 2020, we saw 107% increase from a low of 27 deaths to a high of 56. And while in 2022, we had a reduction to 41 deaths in Onslow County, this year, I think we're going to see it exceed that 56 mark. And the average age of those folks is 39.2 years old. So they're in their prime of their life. And we've had opioid deaths from 14 to 69 years old in Onslow County. More than two-thirds of those deaths are fentanyl-related. And about 45.4% of those deaths are opioids combined with some type of other drug, mostly methamphetamines or cocaine. And so what's happened as far as the results of this? The percentage of children in foster care increased from 19, in Onslow County, 19.4% to almost 45%. And so that, I mean, that's going to impact us into the future. And there's been an increase in Onslow County of 74.2% of emergency visits to the emergency room due to opioid deaths. And so when we look at it, we think about higher emergency room visits, a higher rate of unintentional overdose deaths, the percentage of opioid deaths or the percentage of children in foster care. Although we've seen a decrease in opioid pill abuse, that increase has been overshadowed by fentanyl and other synthetic opioids in our community. The Jacksonville Police Department, in conjunction with Onslow County, the Sheriff's Office, has a COSAP grant. And that COSAP grant has really just three goals. One is to reduce the number in the detention center, the number of folks that are in the detention center for drug abuse and get them into treatment, reduce the number of overdose and overdose deaths within our community, and reduce the number and impact of adverse childhood experiences. So if you think of a parent or a child losing a parent to these opioid deaths, the impact that that has on the rest of their life. And personally, I know two kids that played with my son in soccer that have died as a result of opioid deaths. So everybody in our community probably has been touched by this menace. And so what can we do? And that's why we're here tonight, is to talk about what we can do. And so we have a panel of experts. We're going to start off and talk about the LEADS program with District Attorney Ernie Lee. And please, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. We'll have a question and answer session after the panel gives their presentations. So.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ernie Lee. I'm the District Attorney for this county along with three other counties. I could have been two other places tonight, one place in Duplin, one place in Sampson, but I thought this was the most important place to be. Because I tell you what, opioids in this area, it's an epidemic. It is an epidemic, and it affects so many people. I cannot tell you the number of times that I'm contacted by families because they have children who are basically addicts. And their questions are always the same, "Mr. Lee, what can you do for my son? What can you do for my daughter?" And I hear that all the time. As a prosecutor, before I talk about LEADS, just to give you some idea of what I do. As a prosecutor, I have two constitutional duties, one of which is to prosecute the criminal offenses in the state of North Carolina that occur in my four counties. That's anything from infractions, which are minor traffic violations, all the way to capital murder. And I was in Sampson this morning, meeting with a family in a capital murder case. Second duty is advise law enforcement. So when law enforcement has a question about arrest or searches or things like that, I have a constitutional duty to advise them. And I'll tell you what, we've got a very proactive chief here at the Jacksonville Police Department. We talk quite a bit, and he's very proactive on this issue and other issues in this city. There are approximately 6,000 felony cases pending in my four counties. So as a result, I've got 20 assistant DAs plus myself. I'm short five ADA's, so I only have 15 right now. So we have to cover a lot of cases. But as a result, since there is a limited amount of resources, we've got to decide how best to use those resources. And I can tell you, one of the things that I have learned about drugs and opioids, we cannot prosecute our way out of this epidemic. When I became a prosecutor back in 1987, the big thing was cocaine. Then it became crack cocaine. I prosecuted so many of those cases, yet we still had one more for everyone I prosecuted, if not two more for everyone I prosecuted. So we cannot prosecute our way out of this. Let me just tell you that one of the things we've looked at is, because, look, we cannot put everyone into prison. That is not the answer. We don't have the resources to do that, frankly. We've got to limit ourselves, basically, at the DA's office, and with law enforcement many times, but certainly the DA's office, we've got to be prosecuting those type cases that are violent. We've got to be prosecuting those cases that are causing, I'm talking like rapes and homicides and those things. And those persons that are addicts, though, that are users of opioids and other drugs, we've got to come up with other methods. Because what I have seen, being a prosecutor as long as I have, I'm actually the third generation of some families that have been using drugs, is three generations deep now. And if I last long enough, I'll probably be in the fourth generation. Let me just tell you about one of the things we've been looking at, and we've actually implemented here in Onslow County as LEADS, law enforcement assisted diversion. It's a community-based diversion approach with the goal of improving public safety and public order and reducing unnecessary justice system involvement. What we're looking at is those type of offenses that are nonviolent type of offenses, including drug possession, that we can somehow divert out of the criminal justice system. Now, how do we do that? First of all, law enforcement has some discretion. We actually worked with the schools here in Onslow County, the superintendent and the school board at that time, to basically implement some things that we cannot send everything to criminal court. We don't have enough resources to do that. So we're looking at other options such as teen court, which is, we've been using this for some time in Onslow. We've actually expanded it, though. These are where their fellow students for minor offenses can decide what type of punishment the person gets versus rather than sending them to juvenile court or to adult court. Initiate criminal proceedings addressed by juvenile intake, which means we are trying to work with juvenile intake and determine what type of case are actually either sent to criminal justice system or diverted, like through community-based programs. Because again, a lot of these people, really, what they need is treatment, because they have drug problems. And again, I can put them in jail, I suppose, but when they come out, what are they going to do? Go right back to the same people we were hanging out with before and start using the drugs again. It's just repetitive. And it costs a lot to do that. I have been to the legislature many times. I'm president of the Conference of DA's in this state. On behalf of the other 41 elected DAs, I've been up before the legislature. I keep emphasizing, we've got to spend more money on treatment. Because again, we cannot prosecute, we cannot jail our way out of this problem. In the LEADS program, we have been working with law enforcement to find other avenues for them. We have a long list of offenses the officers can look at, including stuff that happened in schools, like simple assault and things such as that, but also some drug possessions. But I will tell you this, that in my office, though, we draw the line at selling drugs. For those that sell drugs to profit off the misery of others, we're just not going to be helping you. I mean, that's our position. We want to help those people that are true addicts, not those that are making money off the addicts. We also have what is called deferred prosecution, where if someone in fact is charged with a criminal offense, we go through, we work with our deferred prosecution program here in Onslow County, work with law enforcement to divert them, where they will come into court, they must admit their wrongdoing, because the first step in getting help is admitting that you're an addict, or you've committed a crime. That's the first step. And then after that, we can do what's called deferred, which means that if they will do certain things, such as treatment, such as community service, making sure the victim, if there's a victim of a crime that's been made whole, at some point, whether it be a year or two years, they can have that charge dismissed off their record. And the thing I've noticed is, 16, 17, 18, 19-year-olds out committing crimes, they're not thinking about one day they're going to be 25 and 30 and 40 when they need to get a job. And they're not going to think this 18-year-old conviction, when they're 18, is going to have that much impact, but it does. And that's one of the things we try to push with them. It will make a difference. We also have something called 90-96 in the state of North Carolina, which is a statutory thing, which is also a deferred type prosecution for drug offenses. This was passed by the legislature. We use it quite a bit here, again, for those who possess, those who use, those who are addicts, not for those who sell or distribute. And of course, we can also put people in supervised, unsupervised probation. And at some point in time, our laws in the state of North Carolina have been liberalized quite a bit and broadened for expungements. So we've been doing that a lot, particularly in my office. Those people that say had a conviction 10 years ago, but they've had a good life, good record since then, to get that off their record. And we've done that quite a bit. We had a clinic here in Onslow County, I forgot the numbers now. I think it was 86 people that day that went through. And that's 86 people that got those things off their records. You know, it's become, and it's become even more important that we use these type programs, juvenile diversion and LEADS, and here's why. As you probably know, effective December the 1st, 2019, the legislature changed the age for juveniles, came effective that day, which in North Carolina, it used to be if you were 16, you were treated as an adult for criminal law purposes. Now it's 18, which puts us in line with the rest of the country. But nonetheless, it means there must be more resources for juvenile cases, because we have a whole lot more juvenile cases. And we've been doing that, putting more resources than that. Look, and just one other thing I want to touch on, I supported strengthening the death by distribution statute in the state. It used to be, under the old law, that was passed a few years ago, that you had to sell drugs if they caused, or the proximate causes someone else's death, you could be prosecuted. As a prosecutor, I saw an issue, though. How about those who are delivering but not selling? And so we had that law strengthened, and I did push that as president of the Conference of DA's. And that's made it a Class C felony, which means an automatic active sentence. You know, for those imprisoned, I still advocate, I still advocate treatment. Some people are still going to go to prison. But why still? Can't you get some treatment while you're in prison? And that's one of the things I've said at the legislature, if we'll put that money in treatment programs, we'll save money in the long run. And I truly believe that. For those placed on probation or diversion programs, I'm also a big advocate of treatment for those that are using it. You know, the opioid crisis, it must be addressed by law enforcement enforcing laws, which they do a good job, the sheriff's office and the city here, by prosecutors using their statutory authority and discretion in deciding how best to handle these cases, and whether to prosecute or divert, and by judges and following the law. And we expect our judges to also follow the law in this state. But it also includes parents, the schools, the communities, in reporting violations and attempting to be part of the solution, not always just saying, "We got a problem." But I'm also about choices with individuals, because ultimately, everyone makes a choice, whether or not they're going to use drugs or not use drugs, whether or not they're going to sell drugs or not sell drugs. And I'm all about individual choice as well. And I'm all for helping these individuals with LEADS as well as the juvenile diversion when they make bad choices. But we cannot continue to let you make bad choices without repercussions. I'm also a believer in that. At some point, you've got to pay the price. You replay it sometimes. And I tell you what, I appreciate law enforcement for what they do here. I appreciate all these other individuals. It's got to be a community-based solution for a community-based problem. And that's what I truly believe. If you ever need anything at the District Attorney's Office, you're always welcome to call me. If I don't pick up right then, it means I'm in court, but you're always welcome to call me. And if I don't know the answer, I'll certainly find out the answer. I want to thank Chief Hanero for all the support, the hard work he's done through the years working with me at the DA's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Now we're going to talk about reentry. Rachel?
Good evening. I'm Raquel Painter from United Way of Onslow County. Most people in here know, United Way is a collaborator in the community. So one of our new initiatives that we've been working on for the last year is the Jacksonville-Onslow Welcome Home Council. And what that is, is it consists of 106 volunteers within the community, whether they're from law enforcement, government agencies, nonprofits, health officials, all come together to join this council with the primary goal of reducing recidivism here in our community. Opioids does play a huge role in that. When you look at the statistics for someone returning from prison, which in our county, we have about 200 individuals that return to Onslow County from being in prison. And that doesn't include our 1,400 residents that are on parole or probation in our community. So as you see, that's a large population. When it comes to opioids, they are 40 times more likely to overdose from opioids than a general North Carolinian. So those statistics are high. So it's very important for the community to establish this council so that we could help those that are returning from incarceration. Because the majority of the overdoses that take place happen within the first two weeks of release. So what we do as the council is, we establish a rapport while they are incarcerated. So we work with them for their housing, for employment, reconnecting with family. Because if you can imagine, coming out of incarceration, it's hard to get housing. It's already difficult enough in our community for housing, even if you are just a resident that's law-abiding with no criminal record. It's hard for a person who is incarcerated to receive a job. You know, obviously, that's a requirement for being on parole or probation. So if they're not able to receive those necessities in life, a place to live, income to survive off of, they may revert back to old habits. So it's very important for the council to be established. And what we are doing right now, we are working with Newport Prison System over in Carterick. And we currently have 40 inmates that we provide transportation to and from Rayford Farms to get them established prior to getting out, have a job lined up, transportation that takes them to and from. We have committees that help on education, you know, getting some skills established for them so they can be productive in the community. We have a committee that focuses on housing, because all of us know, I look at the community, a lot of us deal with people who are homeless. We are dealing with families who can't afford housing. And I don't want to steal CJ's thunder, because I know that's what he's going to talk about next. But that's a vital issue for our community. And coming from incarceration, that just intensifies the need for that individual. So we have volunteers that help in that aspect also. Substance abuse, like I said, they're 40 times more likely to have an overdose than the general population. So we really want to make sure we got peer support established for them. And especially being a veteran, a lot of times veterans, when they're seeking counsel or therapy, they want to talk to someone who's experienced with that, so they can really open up. Well, the same way, people are coming from incarceration, they want to talk to somebody who's lived that. They want to talk to someone who's experienced that, so that they know that person on the other side of them understands what they are going through. So our peer support is focused on that. We got people that have been through that, that could guide them and help them, so that they don't repeat their actions to get put back in. We definitely don't want them standing in front of District Attorney Lee again. So that's our sole purpose of the council, is to prevent those who are returning to our community from incarceration or on parole or probation from returning. Because what that does is, it costs dollars for us. It's tax dollars. It costs a lot to house an inmate. And that's not free. You know, it comes from us. So definitely, the council is going strong right now. We're working on funding to help in different aspects and avenues. We have transportation set up. We're working with NC Works to get the jobs lined up for them. We have transportation that takes them to and from work, including from the prison system. So they're saving money before they get out. Because a lot of times, when they're released from incarceration, they don't have funds. They don't have money for a first and last month's rent. You know, they're having trouble finding a job. So we want to make sure all that is established for them so that they don't revert back. So definitely, I'm here for questions. I know we'll have a question and answer period afterwards. So I look forward to hearing from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Raquel. Now we're going to hear about the Dicks Crisis Center from Melissa. But you know, the Dicks Crisis Center is truly a partnership between three counties and the city of Jacksonville to help establish that a number of years ago. And so it was established to reduce the number of folks going to the emergency room and the folks coming to jail. So Melissa, if you'd like to talk about the Dicks Crisis Center?
Good evening. So I am with R International, Dicks Crisis, and Eastern North Carolina Outpatient. I'm actually the program supervisor for the outpatient department. But Dicks Crisis and Eastern North Carolina Outpatient, we operate on a no wrong door policy. So anybody that comes either to Dicks or to Eastern North Carolina Outpatient are not turned away. If we cannot provide services to them directly, we will make sure that they have a referral before they walk out of our door. So Dicks Crisis is a 16-bed detox and crisis stabilization unit. They offer, like Chief Hanero said, an alternative to hospitalization or jail for recipients who have a mental illness, developmental disability, or a substance use disorder. They operate on 24 hours, and the average length of stay is usually three to five days. Eastern North Carolina Outpatient, we have several different programs. We have peer support services. We have assertive engagement, which makes sure when they discharge from inpatient, that they still can receive services and engagement until they reach their outpatient appointment. We also have outpatient therapy. We have MAT and OBOT. So they can come to us for mental health medications and therapy, or they can come to us for office-based opioid treatment and receive a prescription for buprenorphine as well as therapy. We are also getting ready to open a behavioral health urgent care. It's still in process, but we are hopefully going to be opening soon. So we'll be able to provide services to individuals who have urgent mental health or substance use disorder need.
Thank you, Melissa. Now we're going to talk about harm reduction. Robert?
Hey, I'm Robert Cooper. I'm a person in long-term recovery. I got eight years clean sober from cocaine. Hey, yeah, back for it. And this is recovery, you know? I'm a CEO of an organization. I'm a father, you know, productive member of society. So recovery is possible. And I know that, you know, we are talking about the opiates, and we're talking about the deaths and all that. But, you know, but there's a lot of folks, there's 23 million people in the United States that's in recovery. And, you know, but my part, talking about harm reduction, is a way that we can get people into recovery. And it's not enabling people. And, you know, we provided Narcan for this community. And I saw the comments in the Jacksonville Daily News of people saying, "You're enabling. Don't do that." And so, but that's not what it is. It is, Naloxone is a reversal for someone that is overdosing from opiates and fentanyl. Now, we got Xylazine out there, which is another high synthetic opiate. And some Narcan is not strong enough for Xylazine. So, but if we can get it in the hands of the community, and normal people like you, you know, if you get it in your hands, because now we've got people overdoses in public places, and, you know, you're walking to the bathroom, somebody's in the stall overdosing, and you don't have Narcan, you can't save their life. And by the time they call 911, it's already too late. And so, and then another thing, too, is after we do the harm reduction, we got to do recovery support services, which is what helped me sustain recovery, is wraparound services and getting a nice house, getting a proper job. And I had a community that supported my recovery. They supported me. I live in Florida, and I open a program here. But, you know, we have a big recovery community down in Florida. And they do a lot, you know, the community do a lot. And like Mr. Lee said, you know, it takes a community. And, you know, because once someone gets into early recovery, they're learning about themselves. Because they was out there using drugs, and they lost touch with themselves. So when they're in early recovery, they're learning about themselves. And we got to have a community that wraps services, jobs, recovery-friendly jobs. So if someone come to their employer and say, "Hey, I've been struggling," you don't want to lay them off, you don't want to fire them. You want to get them some help. And that's what the community can do. And so harm reduction is a vital key to saving lives. And Narcan, and we're doing, July 26, we're doing a virtual Narcan training for the community. And the reason why we're doing that, because in August, it's going to be available in any store. You can go to Walmart, you can buy it over the counter. And people need to know how to use it. And people are scared to use it. But you are protected by the laws, and Mr. Lee could tell you that, you know? You're protected if you come to somebody that overdosed and, you know, or you thought they were overdosing, and you Narcaned them, there's nothing going to happen to you. Okay?
Good Samaritan law.
Good Samaritan law, yes. So, you know, July 26, we're going to do a virtual Narcan training. It's going to be on Zoom. And so we'll show you how to use it. We'll, I'll spray it. We'll talk about it, show a nice video of a person laying down there in the recovery position, and what you do to save lives. Because I got on back of my truck, got Narcan. And I got on back of my truck, and I have Narcan, and I ride with it. Because one day I had to use it. I was driving down the road, there was a car pulling inside the road, and I went there, checked on the person, and they were overdosing. And I Narcaned them, and saved his life. So, and now this person, he's in recovery, and living a successful life. So, thank you. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer your question. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Heather's going to talk about a new program we're starting, the Hotel, Operation Hotel. Heather?
I know most of you in the room, so thank you for coming. This is a very, very important topic for me. This is my bread and butter, and so I was very fortunate to take a job here. I'm a grant-funded physician, the COSAP grant the city was awarded, which is a comprehensive opioid stimulant substance abuse prevention grant. And so from there, I'm the first entity at this police department to do the job, so Chief basically said, "Give the community what they need." So he deals with my multitude of ideas all the time. And Operation Hotel was was something in my my hindsight. So I collectively am running data all the time. Obviously, being grant-funded, I need to know what's happening, when, how, where, where the gaps are, where the deficits are, what I'm missing, what we can do better, where can we find additional funding? And so after some collaboration with our data analysts and obviously boots-on-the-ground work, it's very apparent that our drug overdose fatalities, as well as drug overdoses, our hotspots are hotels. And so our first responders are spending quite a bit of time responding to overdoses at hotels. We know that we have several hotels where Onslow County residents are actually living. There's a lack of housing. We're a very transient community. We've got the military. Housing is pretty thin. So people are kind of, they're getting what what they're going to get. But that also opens the door for a plethora of other issues. We can talk about human trafficking. It's also tied into, you know, the substance abuse world, drug overdoses, and a plethora of other things that can happen. So I was very fortunate to sit on the opioid settlement money committee, trying to decide what's happening in our community and how we could have a vital action plan to address and target that. And so the city was given a portion of that, and then came my idea of, can we put Narcan in all the hotels? So Chief Gennaro was was gracious to facilitate that operation and get get the thing started, and he gave me the go-ahead. So we were, I was given fifty-six thousand dollars to equip the city hotels with overdose emergency kits. It's just like, you know, you go into buildings and you see an AED on the wall. You know what it is. So this is a very similar presentation. It's got an air mask. It's got signs of overdose. It gives you directions. Some of them have alarms that you can use, but ultimately is equipped with a box of Narcan that has two doses in it. So any day, that should be here. Our mayor's going to do a press release on that and talk more about that. But I'm going to equip every hotel with the emergency overdose kit. Their staff will be trained on how to utilize that, signs of overdoses. But I'm also going to attach resource cards, so in the event, whether it's an overdose or not, there's some information for somebody at some point in any capacity. Also, with that funding, we were able to buy additional Narcan, which we will, you know, that is a service. It is a service that the city is offering to our hotel owners. And so we're really hoping that that is very instrumental in impacting the overdose fatality numbers, as well as first responders' time out there on those calls, but also a way that we can bridge the gap of service that if someone does overdose, they they know that there is help out there. So really excited about that. Like I said, should be any day that we have that, and then we'll get started on putting that out there. And unfortunately, because of statistics, I know it'll be utilized, but we really, really are hoping to see such a drastic drop in overdose fatalities. So that's going to be my spiel in Operation Hotel. I'm more than happy to answer questions during the Q and A, but then I'm going to skip down into the youth part. So part of what I do, and immense part of what I do actually here, is juvenile stuff. I'm part of Special Victims Unit, so I get the adolescent cases. But the COSAP grant that I talked about earlier, part of that pays for counseling services for children who have vicarious trauma because of someone in their home using drugs. Maybe it's not in their home, maybe mom is a heroin addict, but she doesn't live in the home. The child is still attached to that. So that grant allows me to do referrals for children to receive those services. When we first started out, it was just addressing the children. But very, very quickly into that project, I realized that it is completely unacceptable for me to extract a child, do some rehabilitation, and then put them back in the same environment that I took them out of. So very quickly, I learned that I have to familiarly, entire unit, address that household. So the first year, we were very successful. We placed over one hundred and eighty-five children in counseling, which means at least one hundred and eighty-five families received some type of services additionally to the counseling for those children. And our biggest goal was a reduction of adverse childhood experiences. With that first year, looking back at the adults that we worked with and the children and recidivism rates, we only had two out of that entire amount that law enforcement or first responders had an additional interaction with, and those were due to mental health diagnosis and medical noncompliance. So our recidivism rate was about point two, point zero two, I think. So that was that was a really big win for us. It was a very big win for our community. So that's part of that. Also, something that that grant also delineates is that a huge part of that is prevention, education, curriculum development, implementation for the Onslow County school system. So all year long, I'm looking at trends. I'm figuring out what what's new, what's kind of phased out, working in cohesion with law enforcement, so that we can do tailored curriculum development for the students, but also educating our teachers, our principals, social workers, school counselors, and as well as our Board of Education, because that's a very evolving issue, and they're very creative. Children are very creative, but also you have to think about the ones on the other end are very creative. If you look at your vape shops, you talk about the Delta Eight, the Delta Nine, very colorful, the marketing, it's extremely appealing to our children. So we've got someone on the other end that they target our children. If you look at the rainbow fentanyl that originated out of California, it's coming straight to the East Coast. It looks like sidewalk rainbow chalk. So very appealing to children. So to talk about those things, we have to give as much awareness as we can, talking to parents, that's huge. I have these conversations, and one of the issues that I'm realizing is is the lack of of awareness, because it is such an evolutionary topic. It's, you've got to be quick, you've got to be on it. And I mean, I'm in it every day, but there's still a lot that I don't even know. I'm learning as I go, because it's such, it's a very creative, very creative subject. So we are really big in the prevention, education, curriculum development. We're working to provide that early intervention and training, trying to get family members the help that they need, working with those children, because we know statistically, if your parents have a substance use disorder, the genetic predisposition and the likelihood is there that that could happen to your child as well. And one of the biggest things that we find, that how children become users is access. And typically, the access comes from the parents. And so working to mitigate that, it's very challenging. And then the last part I want to talk about, besides the treatment part, I just want to echo about the juvenile diversion. The school resource officers have been doing a really good job from the county and the city side. So what that kind of looks like, I just want to go a little bit more in-depth, is let's just say there there's something that happens at school. In the juvenile world, we call those petitions, but in the adult world, we call those charges. So like Mr. Lee said, instead of, you know, we can't incarcerate that, we really want to implement services and kind of figure out why this child's doing what they do. Every child has a behavior for a specific reason, and we have to figure out what that is. So instead of them going through the system, just as he said, we can send them to teen court, we have youth services, and we also have the counseling service. So I do feel like the last couple of years, we've really focused on the juvenile population. That's something I'm very proud of, and I think we're going to keep examining what else we can do, because as we know, early early intervention is very imminent. But I think we're going in a in a very good direction with that. Thank you.
My name's CJ Crooks. I'm the Executive Director for Onslow Community Outreach. So Onslow Community Outreach has been in the community for thirty-three years now, and we started with a soup kitchen and really kind of focused in on what it was that the community needed. And from there, it quickly grew into the next need was shelter. So we're the emergency shelter for Onslow County, but we're also the only no-barrier shelter for a five-county radius. So that means that no matter where someone is, we're going to try to meet them where they're at, to get them into shelter. So right now, we have a forty-four-bed shelter. We were able to move into 1210 Hargett Street, very affectionately known as the old Piggly Wiggly in the New River area. Yes, one day, one day we'll get out of that, but we're in the old Piggly Wiggly building. And those forty-four beds are congregate shelter space, and that's one of the most difficult aspects of what we're kind of here to talk about tonight, is in congregate shelter, you're in a room with several other individuals. So we have a male dorm that has eighteen beds in it, a female dorm that has sixteen beds in it, and three family rooms. And the three family rooms are separated by a wall and petition, and we kind of keep our families away from the other residents as much as we can, so that they can have some privacy. And we do let families self-define themselves. So if mom and a boyfriend have been raising children, we're going to keep them together, because there's a lot more trauma affected if we were to try to separate that family than they're already going through as they kind of focus on their homelessness. With that congregate shelter, we meet people where they're at. Last year, we helped over three hundred and sixty people with over twelve thousand bednights. Over sixty percent moved on to sustainable, better housing. Of the forty percent that didn't, I don't know where twenty went. They just left, and we weren't able to follow up. Some of them may have, some may not. But in congregate shelter, we're going to keep you until you become a threat to yourself or someone else around you. And that gets very difficult with someone who is in recovery, because they have to kind of stay in recovery. And when they're not staying in recovery, almost fifty percent of our population are dealing with their own recovery in some way or another, their own addictions in some way. So it becomes very difficult to try to maintain that housing. And it goes very much to what Mr. Ernie was saying, that treatment, and the more treatment that we can have, when we have an individual who's in shelter and they're getting treatment, much better results. We have two NA classes at OCO. Onslow Community Outreach has NA classes Wednesday afternoon and Friday afternoon, open to anyone in the public, but we encourage anyone in our in our shelter process to go through there as well. We are an ESG-funded facility, so we receive some monies from ESG. But again, when you think about that, it's five counties wide. To say that we operate full is an understatement. I'm looking at some people in the room, and I know that they're operating very similar kind of shelters, and we all know the list, and we talk about the list because it is massive. We are in a housing crisis, as was talked about several times. There are hotels in the community that are acting as shelters, more or less, where they're paying a very minimal amount of rent for a week's worth of time, because there's nowhere else for them to go. And unfortunately, that's just the reality and part of the transient nature that is Onslow County. Some of that has to do with military in some ways. Some of that has to do with just the lack of housing we have. And then the lack of affordable housing, what is the definition of affordable we get into? But that list, we are over ninety percent at capacity all the time. I say we have forty-four beds, but those family rooms, depending on how large a family is, some of those beds might not be utilized, but I still can't fill any more beds than we have. Almost always, all of the capacity in Onslow County, Carteret County, all the way down to Wilmington is full. And trying to find more ways that we can build capacity is really one of the focuses that we need to look at as a community, because without housing and without food, there's not a long term for treatment, right? There's not, you're not going to be able to stay in recovery without a roof over your head when it's storming out, or it's, on Christmas, we were at negative five degrees with wind chill. So Onslow Community Outreach does open white flag shelters, where we'll open up to as many people as we can when we get to that kind of situation. But we're kind of stuck to our forty-four beds, and right now, most of them are full, as kind of imagine many of you kind of face that yourselves. So I am, again, always happy to take questions. I know we have a Q and A portion, so I'll wait for them. But that's Onslow Community Outreach. We have housing available in the community, but there's always a need, and, you know, as a community, we need to look at how more, how we can expand that. Thank you.
Resources in our community, Aaron?
All righty. Good evening, everyone. As before, my name's Aaron McDonald. I'm with Cape Side Psychiatry. Resources is something that was pretty near and dear to me, because before I came to Cape Side, I ran Mobile Crisis with RHJ for four years as their lead, and there was never enough resources for anything, I can promise you, especially substance abuse. We can, we can throw a rock and hit a mental health therapist's office, but we can't do that and hit a substance abuse counselor's office. But first and foremost, everybody wants to go to detox to do that, and this is the fight that I've fought everywhere I go. Detox isn't the end. Everybody thinks that we just need to detox so I can just get clean, and that's the end of it. That's not the truth. That is the furthest from the truth. So on the back table back there, I've provided a few pages of resources that everybody's welcome to. It's absolutely not all of them, I promise you that. There's so many that are there. As District Attorney Lee, there's, as District Attorney Lee said, there's not enough for us, but there are a ton that are underused. But as far as the detoxes go, there are, in the Trillium Catchment Area, we have six, I believe it is. We have Wilmington Treatment Center, which is a private medical detox. We have Walter B. Jones, which is a state-funded, can do medical detox as well. The Healing Place is the new one over in Wilmington. It's great. The difference between the Healing Place and everyone else is they are abstinence-based, so their detox will not be prescribing any type of medication while they're in there, or their treatment program is also, after they go through detox there, they're allotted to the nine-to-twelve-month treatment program. It is also abstinence-based. However, I talked to the Executive Director over there, and he's, they're not turning people away for that. They will comply if somebody's on it, but they will not start them while they're there. And it's totally funded by by the state, so there's no cost to anyone. I believe it's a hundred and two total long-term rehab beds. There's twenty-eight detox beds. They have fourteen homeless beds and tw- I'm sorry, fourteen two-week beds and seven homeless beds per gender, male and female. And then we've got Port Health, which is in Greenville, Ahoskey, and Little Washington. Again, another one that is state-funded, nobody has to pay out of pocket for it. Actually, in Greenville, they also have a children's, well, adolescent teen rehab as well, that is from thirteen to seventeen and a half for teens that do have substance abuse or mental health disorder issues. And then we have Dicks Crisis. You guys already heard about them. At all of these, except for Walter B. Jones, all the Port Health and Dicks Crisis are what we consider a facility-based crisis. They're all sixteen beds. Wilmington Treatment Center has like a hundred and forty beds. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but Walter B. Jones, they are up to twenty-eight days as well. They do provide medical clearance if you need it. They're the one that is the hardest to get into, I will say that, because they do require a referral form. But on the back of my little handy-dandy resource folder is a Mobile, Mobile Crisis number, one of the greatest underused services ever that's totally free to everybody, and they will do everything for that referral for you. They will fill it out, send it off, help get you there, everything. So I absolutely recommend doing that. Now, when we're going into look, look for the aftercare, that's where we're getting clean. We're not getting clean for life at detox. Some people do, that's great. I will never bash it, but we always have those wraparound services, like we're talking about before. This resource is going to show you some resources locally and in the surrounding counties, in Craven, Carteret, that do serve Onslow County. Along with that, we have community-based programs that, like community support teams, assertive community treatment teams. These teams all have peer support services and substance abuse components. And if they, for ACT, if they have Medicaid, that's really the stipulation as far as insurance-wise. CST does have state funds, and they do have substance abuse counselors. ACT has substance abuse counselors. So they can all be treated with substance abuse. And with the housing crisis, they also both, lo and behold, have a housing component to it. So it does help with a lot of different things. I'm not saying it's going to give them housing, but it's going to help them find affordable housing from, with subsidized rates that Trillium works out with apartment complexes and other homes. So with all the resources that are there, I really hope you guys take them and decide that, you know, the person that you're helping or that needs it, do they want medication-assisted, or do they want abstinence-based? Because there are two are two different ones. And there's not one single one that's going to work for everybody. I can promise you that. No treatment was created, and never will probably, that works for everybody. So understanding the need for that person and how long they've been using, or what they're using, they may require medication-assisted with Suboxone, Subytext, Methadone. There's a new one. It's called Broxadier, I believe it is. It's an injection now. It's, they have a bi-weekly and a monthly injection now. And it's buprenorphine. So we're expanding on our needs here in the community. And I can tell you that going everywhere else, Onslow County is way ahead of everybody else, because I work in Dare County, all over the state of North Carolina now. And we're the ones that are having these town halls. Not many others are. So please take advantage of all the resources you guys get today. Ask all the questions you can. And that's all I have.
So we're at the point to ask some questions.
at times, we had a whole lot more cohesion. And we could have these conversations all day long. But unless we can figure out how to work together in the community, it's not going to work for all of us. And there's no such things as anything happening on the wrong side of the tracks. And it's not jumping to the other side of the tracks before it's all over with.